Good evening. This is a meeting of the Select Board and Licensing Commissioners for the Town of North Andover on Monday, January 25th, 2021. This is a virtual session. So pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, GLC 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the North Andover Select Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by the members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting may be found on the town's website at www.northandoverma.gov. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch online, wish to watch the meeting may do so on their televisions by tuning to Comcast Channel 8 or Verizon Channel 26, or online at www.northandovercam.org. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access proceedings in real time via technological meetings. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on the Town of North Andover website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. So with that, I will call our meeting to order with a voice roll call, please.
Laura Bates here.
Phil DeColgiero here.
Mike Medili here.
Richard Valancourt here.
And Chris Nobley here. And as we head into our public comment, I just would want to note, this is our first meeting as officially the Select Board. So we thank the town and the state for fulfilling, filling the desire of this, and we're aptly and properly named now. So with public comment, as we've done since we've gone virtual, these may be submitted at www.northandoverma.gov backslash SB Public Comments. And Madam Town Manager, do we have any public comments that were previously submitted?
Mr. Chair, I just checked the list and we do not have any public comments.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Well, that now brings us to governmental reports. And we've got two items that are obviously very significant. The first that we'll cover is the FY 21 Second Quarter Financial Update. And I think Lynn's with us, is that correct?
I am, yes. So I am here to present the Second Quarter Financials. This takes us through December 31st, 2020. I do want to report that we are on target. Everything, all the revenue collections, with the exception of a couple smaller ones that haven't quite come in yet, that are, you know, falling a little lagged behind, but I don't see any issues at this time. So I'll just, you know, highlight a few of the revenue collections. Property tax revenue collections are at 47.4% for this time of the fiscal year. And it's compared to last year, which was at 49.9. So we're right on target. You know, we had a little bit of a slight delay because, as you might not all know, we are, we're in the middle of a software conversion. So we are now doing our tax billing within our general ledger system, which has been a long road. I want to commend the Treasurer's Office, the Assessor's Office, and our consultant for getting this up and running. They did a terrific job. It was a lot of work. We still have a few hiccups, but that did delay some of the collections being posted. So we'll pick back up any more, you know, right on target, if not exceed target for this time of the fiscal year. Moving motor vehicle excise tax, I'd like to report that we are at 15.4%, which is about 1% over last year at this time. We, I know everybody was concerned that the local receipts and motor vehicle excise might lag because of COVID. People, you know, a lot of people might be out of work not paying their bills, but they are coming in right on, right in line. Meals tax are only at 25%. We knew that was going to slow down. We actually adjusted for that when we set the tax rate per the instructions of the DOR, because they knew that what we were projecting, which was a full amount for the full, if it was a normal year, would be unrealistic. So we brought it more in line. So being at 25% is, is on target and we will meet the new budget that was set when we set the tax rate. Ambulance collections are at 58.15%, which is almost 2% over last year. Building inspections, which is building, plumbing, and electrical are at 54.75. Where last year we're only at 44.9, almost 45%, which is good. So that, you know, this is all indicators that we are still going strong. As we had, me and Madam Town Manager had discussed last year when we were setting the budget, that we felt that we were going to be okay in 2021. Interest income, that one is down substantially from last year. As again, expected, interest rates have gone down. The Treasurer Collector is doing a tremendous job. Reinvesting our funds into larger, you know, interest-bearing accounts. She's moving money around constantly within the different accounts. So I don't anticipate that we'll have much of a shortage there. We might not meet budget 100%, but I'll have other line items that will make up that shortfall. It shouldn't be too substantial. Overall, local receipts are at 54.4% when I factor out the motor vehicle excise, which is the biggest portion of the local receipts, which is typically the way we, we look at that. And we're really good at 54.4%. So other than that, with a couple of line items that aren't collected at this time, they're collected at specific times throughout the year. I see no issues with revenues at this point. I do monitor them on a monthly basis. I know I only report to you quarterly, but if I see any issues, I would definitely bring it to the town manager's attention, who would in turn bring it to you guys. On the expense side, we're at 46.8%, which is in line for this time of year. You know, I don't see anything of concern. The snow account is only at 34% spent. We haven't had a lot of snow on the water once. It's, it's really good. And of that 34%, only 144 is actual spent to date. And 200,000 of it is encumbrances that we do for reserving money and setting aside for snow and maybe for ice and things like that. And we encumber for the contractors just in case. So I don't see any issues with snow at this point. And I feel we'll probably be okay. We won't probably have a huge surplus, but we won't have a shortfall, I don't think, unless for some reason we end up with some really big storms, which I don't want to even say that. I don't want to jinx us.
Careful.
I know. Moving into the enterprise funds, the water and sewer are both running strong. Water revenues are at 55.5% collected with the expenses at only 37.4. On sewer, we're at revenue collections of 45% with expenditures at 36.5. So that's expected for normal business operations with the water and sewer. Jumping into Stevens Estate, as we all know that due to COVID, it has really struggled over and above any other issues it might have had. We're only at 17.3% on revenue collections where we were at 36.9 last year at this time. So it's a complete decrease. It's a decrease of 19.6% or $104,000. Expenditures are running at 34.5%. And with the additional restrictions put in place with COVID, I don't foresee us meeting budget. Where, as you know, when we set the tax rate, we agreed to have the vote to move money from the Stabilization Fund to cover any shortfall there. I hope we don't have to. It's up to as much as $300,000. But other than that, there, we are going to eat up the retained earnings and then some. So that's a concern of all of us, and we know that. We're all aware of it. We're trying to address as much as we can to minimize that as much as possible. So that's on the, the revenues and expense side. Also included in the package was the cash balances. I just want to briefly outline those. In total, in cash, the town has $87.8 million. Has broken down 15 million for General Fund, 10 million for CPA, 3.5 on special revenue, 23 million in capital. Water and sewer combined is a little over $10 million. Stevens Estate only has 38,000. Trust and Agencies is 6.5 million. Stabilization, all of them together is 6.9. And the OPEB Trust is 4.8. So that makes up about the 87.8 million dollars. So that's the second quarter financials. I don't see any issues, and I think we're on track and we're doing really well, which is what we had predicted, and I'm glad to be able to report that to everybody.
So Lynn, Mr. Chair, if I could ask a quick question.
Please.
So Lynn, the, the property taxes, that's not including this current bill that's coming due, right? That was as of the latest bill, or the last bill?
That is correct. Yep.
So if you take out your crystal ball, what's your expectations? Do you think we'll continue to be on track, given all this going on?
I do. I absolutely do. Yep. Because as we had said last year, three quarters of our taxes are paid through escrows.
Right.
So, and a lot of that has already come in. When I run the January report, it is going to show, because a lot of people pay it in January. They don't wait till February 1st.
Right. Okay, well, I guess it would be interesting to make sure we, we keep on, on track with that. Maybe a quick update at some point.
As soon as I get the January numbers together, usually around the 10th to the 15th of the month, the following month, I'll report it and have it at another Port of Selectment's meeting. Yep.
Thank you. Lynn, under the revenues.
Yep.
Um, you had mentioned specifically about interest income, how that was down. And so we should normally be at 50%, but we're at the 39.2.
Correct.
What does that represent in real dollars, that, that drop of 11%?
I believe I have it on one of my spreadsheets. So it's a drop of about 200,000.
That, so we've lost about $200,000 worth of interest?
Yes, of interest. Yep.
Okay.
So we did have, I have a one-time revenue from one of the Columbia GSA accounts that closed out, which is about, almost close to $750,000. That is a one-time revenue that's come, that's going to show up on, within these numbers. So there's a couple of the line items that are coming in higher than expected, which will make that difference. I'm not going to see a, I don't foresee a overall revenue deficit. Actually, I'll see probably a surplus, but interest income, we are taking a big hit on that.
I think just from a, from a bigger picture, just as a, as a selectman and I think as a town, I don't, I don't know that I went into this actually with a full appreciation of what that, that represents. As far as income for the community goes, the interest line item, so, or not line item, but revenue from interest, so. As great as the interest rates are, I guess that's a good reminder of how it's actually impacting us negatively, so.
Yep, it can, definitely. Okay.
Thank you.
Lynn, question, or we've talked about this, the CARES Act, which was, had to be used through December 31st. How does that, now that that's been expended, where does that kind of carry us through? Is there anything from the budget that we've been able to cover or were less exposed or more exposed on financially? Because the CARES Act now has completed its availability.
Okay. Melissa, do you, do you want to chime in on that or what else?
Yeah, we can definitely talk about it together. I mean, so, you know, we, at first, they told us that the CARES Act funding was going to end on December 31st. It was ultimately, the deadline was ultimately extended, but we spent ours. So we are out of CARES Act funding at this point. Some of our items, we did submit to FEMA, and some of that will be accepted and some of it will not. And it's a process, right? So when you get a FEMA reimbursement, that sometimes can be a reimbursement that comes in two years later, right? So it's not money that you can receive right away. It's a cash outlay. So we're still waiting on some of that, so I'm hoping to come back. After that, we will follow the MOU. So the MOU basically lays out what we will do in order to fund any COVID deficits that exist. So first, we go to the, if there's any, any accounts that we're not expecting, and we expect we will see that, because something for COVID, we didn't spend money on. That would go to the Finance Committee Reserve, if there's any funds left there. A lot of that's going to really be the decision on that, you know what I said? And then third, and finally, we would go to our reserve account. So I need to see a free cash transfer on May Town Meeting for the funds that were made in expenditures.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. I think it's good for people to kind of get the perspective that this is an ongoing process and that we still have some good options here because of how Lynn and you have managed this process in the department. So appreciated. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Please.
Lynn, what's the, what is the deficit, I guess, in real dollars with the meals tax that we're, we're not collecting?
So we won't, we won't end up with a deficit in that line item because of the fact that when we set the tax rate, the DOR required us to reduce that revenue source. So just let me pull out my spreadsheet here. So the meals tax originally was budgeted at $602,000. We had to bring that down to 482,000. So right now, we've collected 120,000 of that. And I anticipate, because we've had a timing issue where the next quarter's meals tax hasn't come in yet. But I'm anticipating that it will be about $120,000 each quarter, and we still have three quarters left to come in.
Okay. Thank you. And then the other question, I guess, is the follow-up to the CARES Act. Is there any money coming through the last stimulus that was passed to help with that type of stuff? No.
Not to us. It's only to businesses.
Okay. So there's no local aid?
Nothing. I wish there was, but there is.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And Mr. Chair, I'll just add, as far as the Stevens Estate goes, just because I don't want anybody to, to get nervous or panic, I just want to remind people of the plan, that we did parallel one employee, unfortunately. And our second, we have a second employee who's reduced down to five hours a week. And so we are basically at this point running that as bare as we can until events start up again.
Okay. Appreciate that. That's a good note. Well, if there's nothing further, we'll move to the other significant update, as we touched on earlier, which is the COVID update. So Melissa, I know you and Brian have, have a lot to fill us in on, so appreciate this.
Great, thank you. I'll let Brian start.
Hi, everybody. Good to be back again. Couple of quick updates, just in general, numbers and trends. Generally speaking, we're actually trending in the right direction right now. At our last meeting, we were coming through the post-holiday spike. So we're still seeing high numbers at that point, but things have leveled off and started to come down, which is really good. So masks has come down in daily positives, hospitalizations, the percent positivity testing rate to pre-Thanksgiving numbers. So we've passed that hump, back down, looking pretty good. So we're at a 4.8% positive test rate, under 2,000 hospitalizations, and 3,400 positive tests today, which is better than 8,000 as it was a few weeks ago. Our numbers have come down as well, which is good. So we're down to about 143 active cases, where we were up around 260 before. So our daily cases have come down to between 10 and 20 a day versus between 30 and 40 a day. So that's definitely got one good trend.
Yeah, great job by the people of North Andover.
Yeah, update on, what was that?
I said, "Great job by the people of North Andover."
Yes, absolutely.
Keep faith and keeping others safe. Awesome.
Yep. Vaccinations. So we just completed our first responder clinics. We have a few more first responders that couldn't make the three clinics to get to this week. We have ordered more vaccine, but supplies are extremely limited. The feds issue the allotment to the states, and the states then allot it to all the healthcare practices, hospitals, local health departments, and doctors around the state. So we've registered to receive vaccine. We did receive one shipment already. We're getting another one this week. But they've severely limited our numbers past this point to 100 doses per week, which is utterly frustrating. We are geared up and ready to go. We have everybody on board. We've got the nurses. We've got the staff, literally chomping at the bit to get this, you know. So that's very unfortunate. They, we are helping out with a long-term care facility who didn't get their federal pharmacy program running in time, so they were missed by that program. So we did order vaccines to them. We're going to be getting their clinic done probably next week, which is several hundred long-term care facility residents that were missed. So we are told we're also getting the second doses, which are already automatically shipped to us, as well as our first doses for future clinics. So like I said, we've done the first responders. We're doing long-term care. Long-term care is also being done by the pharmacies and the federal programs. So hopefully they're all done as of next week. That would be fantastic. That's one of our most susceptible populations that we have to look out for. In general, what the caller was talking about tonight was literally mass has, needs about 1.5 million doses to get all of the Phase 1 recipients completed. That's your first responders, long-term care, healthcare workers done. They've received about 748,000 doses so far, which is obviously not quite there yet. So it's going a little bit slower than anybody would have hoped, especially me. I can see the light at the end of the tunnel. We have the vaccine. We need to get it out as fast as possible. It is announced that doing seven mass vaccination sites throughout the state, the closest one to us is going to be the Middleton Danvers Doubletree Hotel. And they're supposed to do between 3,500 and 5,000 vaccinations per day. And that's going to be up and running in the very near future. I think they said it's going to be open on February 3rd, which is just in time, because they're releasing the first year in Phase 2 on February 1st, which is 75 and over. So that is other, one of the other susceptible populations we want to hit and target first. So if we can get them to the Doubletree Hilton Hotel first, I think that would be fantastic. We are.
All right. Would it be, is that a first come, first served facility? Or there'll be, will there be some type of a scheduling process?
I believe, and I don't know all the facts yet, this was just announced today, there will be a pre-registration required, so they can kind of space things out so it's not one big mad rush at 8:00 in the morning, and there's five miles of traffic trying to get to it. So I'm assuming they're going to do what we started to do, which was a new system the state came out with for COVID vaccinations called the Prep Mod. It's online registration, screening form, and your insurance information, everything done prior to you getting the appointment. Then you get your appointment time, and you show up, your stuff's already done, everything's already input. And then that also does pre-automatic billing as well. So there's no more, prior to this, the other clinics we do would actually have to physically bill through Commonwealth Medicine, which was very labor-intensive. This is automatic, so it's going to be a lot quicker and easier on our end, which I'm very thankful for. So the state did announce that today. Hopefully, they can start Phase 2, 75 and over, on the 3rd at the Doubletree. I want to get more vaccine for us, so we can start targeting these populations as well. We did register. We did put our site online. We dedicated the High School Field House as our site. And I did commit to running clinics through Phase 3, because I was hoping that if I committed and we had the staff and the availability to do it, we would get more doses. But that didn't happen. So I apologize. But I wish I had better news on that, on that front. But we're going to do everything we can to get more. If you guys can lobby anybody you know to get us vaccine, I highly appreciate it.
I think we are. Brian and I both on this same call, and, and there was other, a lot of communities on it as well, with questions like, "How do I vaccinate my 6,000 seniors with 100 vaccines a week?" Right? And so it was definitely eye-opening and frustrating. And I think the part that's been the most difficult for our staff is that there's been announcements about Phase 1 opening for everyone, starting next week. It's been really inundated with phone calls, people who want to register or sign up, but we don't have any supplies. And that's a really difficult conversation for them, for them to have. So we will continue to lobby and try to get the site. But the other thing we really think about is transporting people over to the Davis Mills and kind of as well. And we can talk to the senior staff about how we might be able to achieve that by using our vans, because that was one of the things they suggested today as well. But certainly not the news I think we are all looking for today at that call.
Right.
So just a question, Brian. So you, we do have a, we do have an infrastructure set up for people to, once we do get sufficient supply to go in and start registering. Are we going to share that online, or has that been shared already?
We have put that out a few times. When we schedule a clinic for a certain targeted group, we will make an announcement and send a link out where people can go on the link and pre-register, which will give them their point of time, and we'll get their insurance information and their personal information, and their subscription form.
And we will do a robocall. We've committed, Brian and I went on CAM the other day and did like a little update on vaccines, because we've been getting so many calls. And we will do a robocall when the clinics open up. And we also recognize that a lot of people don't have internet access. It's, we've gotten many emails from, from many people who do, but there's some people who don't. And so we'll have staff dedicated to helping people make their appointments as well.
Okay, great. Yeah, I just think, keep sending it out, keep people informed, let them know what the status is. Let them know, you know, we're, we're delayed on our availability of vaccine and, you know, trying to get more dosages. But as long as we have an infrastructure set up, so when we do get dosages, we can ramp up quickly. That's important. That's, I think that's a great first step, or.
Or part-time.
You've got a lot of steps. Sorry.
No, no, we have four. We've hired four part-time public health nurses to assist us in the beginning with the contact tracing, but now with the vaccines. And so, you know, we, we are, we're ready to go and they're ready to go, so.
Just need more than 100 doses a week.
That would be good.
I mean, we'll take them, but I'd rather get 500 a week or more and kind of go from there. But we're obviously being limited at this point. And maybe when Johnson &amp; Johnson has their vaccine approved under an EAU, we'll be able to get more. But until that time, we're kind of hampered here.
It, it is unfortunate, because people are dying. So it's an awfully low number. I can, I can hear the frustration in both of your voices, Madam Town Manager and Brian. It is disappointing. There's no question about it. It is disappointing. That's a very low number. And hopefully they're taking good care of products as it's being shipped and coming in. We've all heard those horror stories as well, but, but it will be here soon, and the sooner the better, so.
I agree.
We've had staff reporting COVID vaccine-related nightmares, keeping them up at night, being nervous that they fridge unplugged, or they forgot something. I'm not mentioning anybody who's on the call right now, but it might have been someone on the call right now. So I think they're all very aware and nervous about making sure that we do everything correctly.
That sounds like a very good employee.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I'm very lucky.
Mr. Chair, if I may. Brian, so we're getting 100 doses a week. How does that compare to, say, what maybe CVS and Walgreens are getting? Or are they getting anything?
They are getting some. I'm not sure what they're getting, but they are targeted, and they're getting it from the federal government through corporate to do long-term care, which is obviously one of the main populations we want to get to first. I don't know what numbers they are getting. I did speak to the pharmacy manager last week at the Northern America CVS to find out what was going on and try to collaborate a little bit as to how they want to roll things out. But I haven't reconnected with her again, which I definitely will in the next couple of days.
One other thing they mentioned to us today on the call that I thought was interesting is that a lot of other states have prioritized their vaccine differently. And so because you may be seeing, and we're all seeing, right, that New Hampshire and West Virginia, people are of the general population are now getting vaccinated already, I think, which actually adds to the anxiety here in Massachusetts. But the way the state rolled out here, they chose to do those long-term facilities first, as well as group homes, the homeless population in shelters, et cetera, in order to stop the growth from those populations. And so it's one of the reasons why we're phased so far behind at this point. And that was one of the, one of the messages we got from Secretary Sutter's today. one of the messages we got from Secretary Sutter's today.
Yeah, the structured way they're going about it is slowing it down a little bit because they're trying to target the right populations first. So it's a kind of a give and take there. So I guess depends on your philosophy on that. I know my mother asked me every day, I tell her to go to Florida, just line up, she'll be fine. But can't get it from me yet. She's not old enough.
Well, doesn't this all sort of also point to how important it is for us to, to keep flattening the curve? Which is if the proactive part of this is to address the at-risk biggest spread populations or cohorts, then it's really on the rest of us to be incrementally more responsible. Because that, you know, we just have to wait longer in line. But that's theoretically the payoff, which is there's less of that intensive spread. So I think that's the other part of the balancing act here. Is, is that right, Brian?
Yes. You want to lower the hospitalizations and the mortality by hitting these people first. So that's the target. That's the structured tier that they went with. That on some levels, it's definitely agreeable, but some people in the general population don't understand it. But we have to do our part as other officials in other populations to protect them and flatten the curve and not spread it.
Any other questions or thoughts for Brian or Melissa on, on this other than thank you?
All right.
Other than just stay on it.
Thank you. I am every day. I will, I will. Thank you. All right, everybody. Call me with any questions anytime. I'll talk to you soon.
Stay safe.
Thanks. You too.
All right. Um, with that, uh, I'd like to move into licensing. If I could have a motion, please.
Mr. Chair, in motion, we move into licensing.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, a second.
Appreciate it. If we could just have a voice roll, please.
Laura Bates, aye.
Phil DeColigero, aye.
Rosemary Smidely, aye.
Richard Valencourt, aye.
And Chris Nobley, aye.
Okay, we're now in licensing. I'd like to just start by, for the benefit of the people at home, as to why we've requested some of these changes. And so they, we drafted proposed changes to the Northland Alcohol Beverage Licensing Regulations that will assist the commission in its review of applications when multiple applicants apply for one license. Currently, applications are reviewed by town clerk's office for completeness and not scheduled for a public hearing until the clerk has determined that the application is complete. This may cause a delay in the commission's review of the application on their merits and can create an unintentional delegation of authority to the town clerk's office. By having the commission review all applications submitted, all are reviewed in the same manner and decisions will be based on applications as filed on the date and time of filing. And, um, they, we've also added, I also added a time by which public hearing on applications will be held, which is intended to provide more certainty in the application process. So as, um, our town council Suzanne Egan pointed out in her brief description of the changes, it's just a, it's an effort by the commission to make this process fair and, um, and hence you have your review of the proposals in your package. Is Attorney Egan with us?
Yes, I am. Okay. And I can explain it. Yes. And I can also explain sort of the formatting change also. There were two different sections in the regulations that dealt with the application process. And so that was section four on page three. It was B4 on page three and also section 30. So what I did is I combined those two to make it one section that provides all of the details for the application process, which will make it easier for the applicants. Everybody will understand what they're supposed to do. It lays out all of the details in one section as opposed to people having to jump from one section to the other to figure out exactly what materials they have to have submitted for a complete application. And then, then what I also did is I added some language which provides that the complete application is actually up to the applicant to make that determination that they've complied with the regulations. And that we'll, as a town and a licensing commission, move forward with the review of the applications. But that doesn't mean that that application is necessarily complete because it will go to the commission and the first question will be that, you know, the commission will review. Is this application complete at the date that it's come before us? If it's not, then, you know, and you will have sort of the discretion to say, we'll give the person more time or we'll reject on the basis of an incomplete application. And then you'll go to the merits of it to determine if it's in the best interest of the community to grant the license for that location to that individual. And I also did add the timing for holding that public hearing, which will, as Chairman Smidely said, it will provide, uh, it, it'll make everything much more streamlined because you'll get the application. Everybody knows when you're going to have a hearing, when they have to get their application complete by, and you'll have the decision. And then if they're unhappy with the decision, there's an appeal process that they can go to the ABCC and make their argument there. And the ABCC can make that determination as to whether it was a proper decision. And that's one of the reasons why we have the commission making the decision because it provides the applicant with an appeal process. If the licensing agent makes a decision that the application is incomplete, they're, they're stuck. They can't appeal from a licensing agent decision because they don't have any authority, but they can't appeal from a commission decision. So if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Susannah, um, I was just curious, what, can you walk us through the scenario where like we, we had a license up that nobody had? And what happens if you get two applicants at the same time? What's the decision, you know, what's the decision process? Is that left up to the licensing commission of who gets that license?
Yes. So I know that there was some discussion at the last meeting about putting in sort of regulations that helped make that determination as to who, who essentially gets to file first and who gets heard first. But after speaking with the ABCC, there was a discussion that advised against doing something like that because then those particular regulations could be subject to appeal in and of themselves. So it's best to stick with the statutory process that the commission is authorized to review the license under. And if an applicant, so you have one license available and you have a number of people apply. Each application is date stamped, date and time stamped, and then it's reviewed on the time that it comes in. And you make the determination as to whether it's complete procedurally, and then you make a decision on the basis of the merits. So it just goes right to you for that decision.
Town Council, we should add that we have this exact situation right now that we'll be dealing with over the next couple of weeks.
Right, exactly.
So is it a case where you go down, um, you know, you take the one that you got at, say, 11 o'clock AM? Then you take the one that you got at 12 o'clock and you kind of go down that way and determine? And as you're going through that process, you determine which one would be best suited for that license? If they, what if they're, and if they're all compliant? Do you take the first one or it's just, the commission has the ability to choose which one is better suited?
Well, you take the first one, right? Because everybody's, it's a first in time.
Okay.
You file it.
That's my question.
Before you, right?
Okay. Perfect. Thank you very much.
Yep.
So Madam Chair, if I could ask a question to the town manager. So you said we have this situation that's going to be in front of us soon. Will they, if we vote this, um, these regulations or these changes in tonight, will they fall under this jurisdiction? Or will they still be under the prior rules that we had in place?
I would say that because the applications were received before these were passed. Suzanne, I don't know if you agree or not, that they'd fall under the old policy of how we would do it.
I would agree, but I would also just add that there's no substantive changes to the regulations that will affect your review of the um, applications that before, come before you, because this is really going to the application process and to whether or not the licensing agent makes that decision, whether the applications are complete or not. So at this point, if she makes a decision that is complete or not, then they'll still come before you, but they'll come before you with that decision made. Because that's really what we have to do under the law. It has to be the licensing commission that makes a decision whether or not that, um, application is eligible for the license.
Has this, these new procedures been reviewed with the licensing agent so that they are aware?
Yes.
Do we have any more questions or concerns or is everybody all set with this? Hearing none, I'll, um, I'll entertain a motion.
A move that the Select Board acting as the Licensing Commissioners accept the amended Town of North Andover Alcoholic Beverages Regulations as presented, Chris Nobley.
We have a motion by Select Board Member Nobley.
Second.
We have a second? Okay. Second by Select Board Member DeColigero. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Roll call vote, please.
Laura Bates, aye.
Phil DeColigero, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye.
Richard Valencourt, aye.
And Rosemary Smidely, aye. It is a unanimous vote. Thank you so much. Suzanne, we appreciate your effort. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to move out of licensing.
A move to close the meeting of the North Andover Licensing Commissioners, Chris Nobley.
Laura Bates, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Laura Bates, aye.
Phil DeColigero, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye.
Richard Valencourt, aye.
And Rosemary Smidely, aye. There you go, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, man.
To you.
All righty. Okay, uh, we just have a couple of items on a new business. The first is appointment of Charles Matheson to the Stevens Estate Advisory Committee. And if maybe the committee could, uh, give us a little thumbnail here for a moment?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Phil and I met with Mr. Matheson. Um, and he has a deep passion for the Stevens Estate, very, very much interested in its history and its upkeep and making sure the right things are done over there. He's got many years of marketing experience and actually nonprofit fundraising. So that combined with his passion for the history of the estate and we thought that he would be a good addition to the trustees. So we would like to appoint Charles Matheson to the trustees of the Stevens Estate trustees.
All right. Thank you. Well, I'll take that as, as, as a motion. Do I hear a second?
Phil DeColigero, second.
Okay, and no other discussion? Could we have a roll?
Laura Bates, aye.
Phil DeColigero, aye.
Rosemary Smidely, aye.
Richard Valencourt, aye.
And Chris Nobley, aye. Five zero, and Charles Matheson, welcome to the Stevens Estate Advisory Committee. And, um, and we are, we're looking forward to your service. And Dick, I always got to leave that door open for you, my friend.
Yeah, so, uh, it's been a while since we get to thank all of our volunteers. But, you know, thank you to Mr. Matheson for stepping up and volunteering for the Stevens Estate and to all of our volunteers, including the members of this board and the school committee. Um, and all, everybody that helps make this town a great place to live, work, and play. Thank you very much for all your efforts. It really matters.
Thanks, Dick. Appreciate it. That's great. All right. And guess what? You know, although we're in the middle of winter, we're already talking about our annual town meeting. So, uh, tonight we open up the warrant for the March 18th, knock on wood, 2021 Annual Town Meeting. So, uh, Madam Town Manager, if you could just kind of orient, uh, the folks at home, sort of what we're doing with this first step.
So if I remember correctly, last year we changed a little bit how we do this. It used to be that you opened and closed the warrant every one of your meetings. What I'm going to ask you to do, I'm even going to change your motion a little bit, just so you don't forget. Uh, I'm going to have you open the warrant today and we're going to leave it open until March 22nd. I think that's a far more transparent process. So people who want to get citizen petitions together are able to do so. So I'm just going to ask you to change the motion and have it be that move that the board of Select, the Select Board, I already did it, move the Select Board to the warrant for the May 18th, 2021 Annual Town Meeting and close the warrant on March 22nd, 2021 at 4:30 PM.
Sounds good. I like that. It makes, makes a lot more sense. Any questions from, uh, my fellow Select Board members about our, our slight change in, in this process? Other than we'll probably gain about an hour of time between the opening and closing over the next three months. I'll entertain a motion then to, uh, to pass this.
Mr. Chair, I move, um, that, uh, phrasing exactly what the town manager laid out for us, that we do the changes as she stated in opening and closing the warrant.
So opening on the 18th, closing on March 22nd at 4:30 PM, was that correct? Madam Town Manager?
Will the Select Board open the warrant for the May 18th, 2021 Annual Town Meeting? And close the warrant on March 22nd, 2021 at 4:30 PM?
Okay.
So move.
Okay, there we go. And if I could have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Phil. And if there's no further discussion, let's have our roll vote, please.
Laura Bates, aye.
Phil DeColigero, aye.
Rosemary Smidely, aye.
Richard Valencourt, aye.
And Chris Nobley, aye. So with that, passes five zero, and we've got our, our new and improved process in place for the town warrant. So appreciate.
Mr. Chair, but I, I wasn't able to jump in in time when you said if there's any further.
Oh, apologies.
I guess, I, I want to kind of revisit a little bit because I wasn't quite sure what the motion was. Are we, did we move to open the warrant for tonight?
The warrant is now open. It will stay open for a two-month period, which actually is longer than we, I usually would open the warrants. But our next meeting is not until February 8th. And that seems like a very short period of time. And with coronavirus and the difficulty you may have getting citizen petition signatures, I want to make it a little bit of a longer period than usual. So the warrant is open now and will stay open until March 22nd.
That, that's what I thought we did, but I wasn't, I didn't hear the exact words that we're opening the warrant today. I, I heard some dates that I wasn't quite sure of. So, okay.
Sure.
Thank you.
I know, Paul. Sorry for jumping on that a little fast for you there. Not quite the same. It's all sitting in the same room. I know.
No, you, you can't see the body language.
Clearly. It definitely does make a difference. And no one can see me at all.
One of these days. Okay. All right. Well, uh, with that in place, uh, we move on to our consent items. We have two tonight. The first is to accept a donation from the China Blossom of, uh, tree lights for the common. And, um, I've not seen them. I don't know, Madam Town Manager or, uh, Lori, if you've, you've seen them or can add anything to that?
Yeah. So, I mean, and I think Selectwoman Smidely would be, um, a great person to talk about this because she did get the donation. But the lights look beautiful and they're still up. But if you would, if you wouldn't mind, I would love to have Selectwoman Smidely take the floor on this.
Please.
Thank you, Madam Town Manager. And yeah, it's actually my pleasure. The Yeet family of China Blossom, probably the longest-running family-owned restaurant in the Merrimack Valley, soon to be coming up on their 60th anniversary. It has, uh, we'll go back a little bit. They, uh, very generously, at the start of this COVID epidemic, donated a tremendous amount of masks that they donated to our first responders because at that time, there just weren't enough to go around. And to the, the chief's credit, because, um, they got so many and so many communities did not have them, again, and so many communities did not have them, again, to protect their first responders. They did share them amongst other communities. We're talking thousands is what the Yi family donated. I did receive a call that they wanted to donate seven hundred and fifty dollars towards holiday decorations. And really left it to the discretion, I discussed with them, that we will need lights again. Because as crazy as this sounds, you do not have to adjust your style, that outdoor lights are made with soybeans. And I'm repeating that because it doesn't sound rational, but they're made with soybeans and the animals do eat at the wire. So we find ourselves replacing lights every year. But the Yi family with this very generous donation did provide enough lights for our lighting display this year. And again, as we mentioned at our last meeting, through the great effort of Jeff Coco in the festival committee and of course, our DPW and others to make this all happen. So they've been a wonderful family to the town for many, many years. And it was just so wonderful of them to, you know, to see where they could join in the decorating of the town. So this is, when you see them, if you go to get your takeout, make sure you say thank you to the Yi family. And we certainly thank them very, very much. So I would ask that we send out a very nice thank you note. And, and that's it. Thank you.
Well, that's wonderful. That's great. Well, we appreciate that and we will, we will follow up with that. And, and then the other item we have here is to accept a grant in the amount of twenty-six thousand from Merrimack College for additional public health nurse to address the COVID nineteen. And I know this has been something that our Madam Town Manager has been working on. So we appreciate this and maybe could add a little bit more to that because this is certainly was helpful for us.
I can add to it, but all of the credit really goes to Suzanne Egan and Brian LaGrasse for getting it done, not me. But, you know, we realized early on that, well, Merrimack College is both the benefit. It was a burden when it came to COVID nineteen. And while we have had our hiccups getting through the process, they have agreed to give us a thousand dollars to each month to offset the cost. And so Suzanne has been negotiating that. And here we are with this. Suzanne, is there anything you want to add?
It's a total of twenty-six thousand dollars. A portion of it we are getting now and a portion of it will come in a second later on. But it has allowed us to have people that really have been dealing specifically with Merrimack, which has freed up other staff to deal with other contact tracing, which has been really important. And I don't know if Suzanne has anything she wants to add. She was working very closely with council.
No, I don't have anything else to add. They, they, you do have a copy of the letter from Nicholas McDonald and also a copy of the check that we've received, the first supplement of it or installment of it. And then we'll continue to receive and it's a thousand dollars a week till the end, till their school year ends.
I'd like to speak to this a little bit. It was pretty obvious that I was pretty tough on Merrimack College during the COVID with all the confusion of which town were to take credit. But this, but I did at the end of speaking pretty firmly with the school. I did say that the town in Merrimack College have enjoyed a pretty good relationship over the last, my goodness, what was it, nineteen forty-six, I believe, after the war, something like that, that they opened in our community. And this is exactly what I was referring to. It's that mutual relationship as being part of a community and helping and offering services and, and just being a great citizen nonprofit to the town of North Andover. So I greatly appreciate this gesture of goodwill and thank you for all who were involved in putting this together. And we hope for more things like this from the college where it's, as a member of the community, that we all work together in what's best for our town. And again, thank you very much to Merrimack College for this donation.
Wonderful, wonderful. So with that, I just need a motion for us to accept these consent, these consent items.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of the acceptance of these consent items.
I second that.
Thank you. And our roll vote, please.
Laura Bates, aye.
Phil De Colagero, aye.
Rosemary Smith Dilly, aye.
Richard Valencourt, aye.
And Chris Nobley, aye. Five zero. And so we have accepted the donation from China Blossom and we'll send them a nice follow-up note and the grant from Merrimack College as discussed earlier. So we appreciate that partnership with Merrimack. Alright, this brings us to the approval of our minutes. The first is our open session minutes of December fourteenth, twenty twenty. Are there any comments or changes, revisions of those minutes? No. Okay. If we're all good, then I'll hear a motion to approve those minutes, please.
Mr. Chair, I move that the select board approve the open session minutes of December fourteenth, twenty twenty as presented.
Thank you.
And I'll second that.
Laura Bates, aye.
Phil De Colagero, aye.
Rosemary Smith Dilly, aye.
Richard Valencourt, aye.
And Chris Nobley, aye. So five zero on that. And then we also have the open session minutes of January eleventh. Any changes or additions, modifications to those minutes as printed?
Chair, I'll motion that we approve those minutes as printed.
Thank you.
January eleventh, two thousand twenty-one.
Alrighty.
Mr. Chair, I second.
Appreciate.
Laura Bates, aye.
Phil De Colagero, aye.
Rosemary Smith Dilly, aye.
Richard Valencourt, aye.
And Chris Nobley, aye. Five zero. Those minutes are also approved for the January eleventh, twenty twenty-one. So that covers our minutes, which brings us to old business. I don't think we have anything on tap for that. Town manager report, we covered the, we covered the budget, we covered COVID.
Couple of small things. I do, a few small things. I want to recognize Lori. I don't know if any of you have been by the Alpine Playground yet, but it's amazing. She did an excellent job on it. It's got a, it's really geared towards toddlers, which is something that we are missing in town. So if you haven't seen that yet, it's really amazing. I want to recognize one of our long-term employees, Dan Kynckes, who, from DPW, who announced that he is retiring this week. He is amazing and rides his bike to work every day and certainly has been a great role model for many of the DPW employees down there. And so we want to wish him well. Once, like you know, at the RFP, the Stevens Estate is out. We did get some feedback from the long-term committee as well as the trustees. It is on the street and I believe, already, from now on, we've already requested a copy of the RFP, which is a lot. I'm excited to see that. That's exciting. And, you know, we've been sharing it on Twitter and trying to build a little bit of activity around it. We're also working on a new food insecurity program where basically we are partnering with local restaurants. We're going to infuse money into local restaurants while dealing with some of the food insecurity that we're seeing. And so we'll be announcing that program over the next couple of weeks. I want to recognize Andrew Shapiro, who presented at the MMA conference. I was so proud of him. It went amazingly well. He presented on pandemic permitting and how the town really pivoted to being remote quickly. Really gave a lot of props to our IT take team and was just really impressive. Got amazing feedback and questions from the audience. It was, it was amazing to see. I was very proud of him. We're working actively on the budget. You all saw the letter we sent to the school committee today and we'll be at the finance committee meeting tomorrow. And we do have an agreement in principle with Amazon for the final development agreement. So we'll be bringing that to you at your next meeting for authorization. So lots of stuff going on, but it's been good busy, which we like. So.
Wow, that's great. That's great.
Madam Town Manager, apparently though, it wasn't enough to hold your dog's interest because she got up and left in the middle of your, your update.
He, he doesn't like when I wake him up. He's very good. Yeah, so. Yeah, he vacates. But, you know, it's not easy being a fifteen-year-old dog, I guess.
Yeah.
Well, that's exciting, really, you know, how we're kind of trying to hit all the residents here in town during this pandemic, but also looking ahead because there will be, spring will come, summer will come. And, you know, we're, we're looking at our future here. So these are some very significant things that we're setting the road toward. So I appreciate the ongoing work and the fact that we still are going to be, looks like, remote for a while. And, and so Melissa, I just really appreciate you and the whole staff. It's just what a great job in functioning and keeping our town hall proactive. It's just, just really impressive.
Thank you. Good team. I'm lucky.
Totally, we are. Select board member updates. Anything, Dan?
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Please.
So I had the opportunity to sit in on the sustainability committee meeting this past week and they met with mass development and they presented the PACE program, which is, it's like as a loan program for energy-saving improvements to existing buildings. So they sort of gave them their, the rundown and it would have to be approved and accepted by the town. Something that we want to participate in. So they, obviously, it speaks to the sustainability committee. So Andrew Shapiro was there and they all talked about that and they had their questions. And I think Andrew's going to prepare something to present to the select board at some point. So, so that was good. It was nice to hear about that. It would be really great for existing buildings to be able to capitalize on that. And, you know, whether it's solar panels or insulation or anything like that. And then they talked about Earth Days coming up and they are planning that and they're gonna town-wide cleanup and they are going to do their rain barrels and compost bins and they'll have all of that sort of stuff available. So as they get more stuff nailed down, we'll get more information that they'll be able to get out to the town. And then to circle back to Applin, we drove by this weekend and it looks awesome. And the boys were really excited and they want to get up there and play on the new structures. So they did a great job, but that's all I got.
Wonderful, wonderful. Anyone else? Well, with, go ahead, Dick.
No, I just said, no, sir. Nothing. Nothing from here.
Alright, well, I guess with that, I will note our next meeting will be Janu, will be February eighth, which will be the day after, a couple, a couple of days after Mr. Brady plays in his tenth Super Bowl. So I guess we'll all have something to think about come that day too, still. With that, I'll hear a motion to adjourn our meeting.
Mr. Chair, move adjournment?
Thank you.
Second.
Alright, full vote?
Laura Bates, aye.
Phil De Colagero, aye.
Rosemary Smith Dilly, aye.
Richard Valencourt, aye.
And Chris Nobley, aye. We are adjourned. Take care, stay healthy. We'll see you in a couple of weeks.